As far as that bill from Burton's Water Service.
Um.
Um, for the water softener, they came on charging seventy dollars per service fee. Because the line is hooked up wrong and put it back.
Yeah, I just pay the bill. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, we, I can see the members. We should talk to the people that were there because you weren't there.
Right, yeah.
And I don't, I don't know who done it.
I, I was, I was home the day Burton's came, all of them did that part.
Maybe talk to them.
It was basically.
Hooked it up then.
Yeah.
He was there for all about eight minutes until I had to charge seventy dollars service fee, so.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll find out.
Alrighty.
Director down, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks. Um, Sherman, Lonnie, remember, sorry.
Uh, I'm, I'm Sherman Minner and my name's on the agenda here. I called, uh, and asked to be placed on the agenda with Lonnie. But it's not really me on the agenda, it's Kimball Christian Church. And Mark Magnuson sitting here beside me is an elder at Kimball Christian Church. And if any, if the church needs to speak, it'll be him speaking, not me, so.
Alright, so I'm kinda here representing the church and Hendrix Bus Service and Hendrix Sandal. We'll start with, uh, the church years back needed city water. So at that time, they ran a branch off Elm Street, all the way out to the church and they flipped the bill themselves. Now they're in need of a sewer service. Well, I'm in need of water and sewer. Uh, the mains end at the old alley that runs on the east side of the high school. And the reason it never went no further, the sewer main, because it's off a shelf and it took a lift station. Uh, and the sole water rings there also. Um, I, I believe when the church put the water line in at that time, it should have been addressed to walk that street. Um, the reason I feel there's, there's a need for, uh, water and sewer to go up that way is because they are now on a dead end line. And it's not good. Um. Looking back, this is something that should have been addressed years ago, um, we had a trailer cart, it got shut down because of, uh, sewer and water. There's rental property right next to the church that probably going to be in the same hole. But, uh, I have three separate parcels down there and, uh, I, I would love to have city water at all three and maybe even more because my middle piece of property, I'd love to someday see like a strip mall or something that, you know, doesn't need, uh, highway frontage because there is no land available on top of the building anywhere. But unfortunately, I'm a dirt worker, so I disturb so much soil, I can't do a conventional sewer system. My other pieces, I can't. Um, so I'm just, I'm just, and, and the church needs a sewer and, and if the, you know, if the gravity flowed it to a lift station, they could tunnel, they could, you know, let's say that should be their behalf or however, can tunnel underneath the highway to connect to it or if it's a forced, uh, pressure main system. I, I, I mean, I am not an engineer, so I don't know how to design the system. But I think with today's technology versus years back, it's not that tough a deal. So I, I would really love the, the board to have their engineer take a look at it, see if it's even remotely feasible. Um, you know, I, I paid just as much tax as it is if I got water or sewer. And I don't have either, either.
Wasn't this addressed when I was mayor, oh?
That was, that was, uh, Robinson House.
Okay, okay, that was, and there was no way because of the.
The shallowness, so the Robinson House.
And the water table or something like that, or?
The, the main is so shallow that they, they tried it one time and it froze. So the Robinson property actually has its own well and its own sewer also. So when that goes down the road, that would, you know, and, you know, it just wasn't an option at the time, I mean.
Right, right, because that was twenty years ago, almost twenty years ago.
Uh, was it?
Wasn't that ninety-eight, ninety-nine, I think, yeah. Next year.
Well, and, and if you popped a manhole at the, at the end of the al- old alley down there, I mean, it's only down there that far. If there wasn't a school on it, it would be froze all the time.
Right.
So I mean, it would take a little more than just, uh, running a pipe unless you have to make it go uphill, but. So, um, I mean, without fut- future saying, I mean, I, I, if it's something the board can look at and let us know, I mean, we're not broke, but we sure can't afford a project like that.
Right.
But I, I think for the, the future of the city, it'd be a good idea because, you know, there, we ain't expanding anywhere else, maybe we can someday that way.
Are engineers here right now, maybe come up with what?
We're sure, yeah. Um, it's gonna probably be a pressure sewer system based on what you said, like the, uh, the depth of the sewer, it's not even up to gravity system for sure. And that's what we're trying to do, church do, their, their innovation, so, uh, so the upper sewer system, water was definitely an option, it's never cheap across, did that goes.
Right.
Probably four hundred bucks a foot, probably case of that need, but it is no bigs.
Right, right.
So it, it's no problem, the numbers together, and we can make any work, it's just whatever amount it costs.
Right, right, either it's feasible or not, you know, and, and the, the church is faced right now with, uh, most likely putting in a new, uh, drainage field system, and I don't believe the old one lasted much more than twenty years, did it?
Yeah, probably a bit, yeah.
About that. So, and, you know, they're no, they don't give them away no more either, so I mean, they're gonna be faced with that cost, you know, between, you know, a little transportation everywhere, maybe, maybe not. But I just, I just think it.
You guys are sort of in there, you guys are looking at doing this because you're looking at a big expansion of the church, right?
Yes, we're looking at, at.
So it costs a lot of that.
Yeah, we're looking at doing an expansion and this goes right with the expansion because we have to make sure we can have water and drainage issues. We gotta figure out the water drainage issues and then what about septic and, uh, and water line? And I know, and we put that water line in, it was like not the greatest deal because it's a deadline and boy, who's gonna be flushing out every so many months or half years or whatever too, but.
And, and it's, and it might be a time to look at, maybe even tie into that again and make a loop system, um, fortunately, they haven't had no problem freezing the dead end lines, you'd like to freeze first. Um, most city lines, they like them to be looped, so there's some movement. Um, so that, that's, that's pretty much all I have in a nutshell.
David, David, what can you talk?
I can certainly pull some numbers, you have enough data.
And is, is there any grant money or any of that, I know in different, different things, is there possible grant money for projects, but I have no idea myself.
Yeah, I can certainly talk to, uh, convince people or opposite of that specifically, we can check on that.
Maybe you can do a little more extra frame at church, do we have? You guys have the source there.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
What kind of type of will we be looking at since we're looking at stuff?
Dave, how fast do you like to wait?
Yeah, I could, I could jump out there with you. Yeah, I could certainly do it in the next week or so, here to get your numbers.
Okay.
And I already have number ten, one of our superior guys, I don't know if the other guy's in the leadies.
Yep.
I hope so. You know what, I have one to help, help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to leave it for it. Um, so any requests, Dave? This is really weird.
Hi, I'm Keith Markworth with Harvest Bank. Um, here to talk about a different matter, but circling back to all the difficulties we faced during the winter with utilities. Uh, our sewer line from the bank to the city's main froze this year. Uh, first time in probably sixty years. I've been there thirty-four, I asked Jane Pickle, she's been there a whole time, never froze before. Where it froze is where the city, the new main on, on, uh, uh, the north end of our parking lot ties into our private line. There is now a dip there, apparently that's settled and it's causing a puddling. So therefore it froze and, uh, it relates to that new line hookup. I'm not here to complain.
Off of screws, correct, off of screws.
Yes, exactly, I'm not here to complain or ask you to cause share anything.
Should I say the beach?
Uh, but anyway, you know, we've had much harsher winters since nineteen, between nineteen sixty and now. This was a harsh one, but I remember very clearly it was worse.
So you had your sewers freeze up too, right?
Yeah. And so, and, and the sewer line runs right under our parking lots, so there's no snow covered.
Yeah, that's, uh, true.
But again, it's not froze in the last sixty years. I, I, most importantly, I want to point out something to be very careful of, the idea of telling people to let their water run. Had we done that in the bank, we would have had a terrible flood.
Oh?
A terrible flood would have caused a lot of damage.
Yeah.
Please think very carefully before we recommend letting water run. Uh, because if there's any chance, the sewer line is going to freeze.
That's an interesting thing too, oh, could you share some of the bad?
Yeah, but why would you wanna, you know, cool that wrong?
Well, because it's very costly and the water could freeze up if you wanted it to.
Yeah, but if you have babies at home, you gotta be careful.
Well, we would, I mean, if you have water in the basement, we, we have electrical outlets, fourteen inches above the floor. Uh, we have our computer system down there, most of it's elevated, but it would have been extremely expensive, bad, if it had happened over the weekend. So, I, I just wanted to mention that too.
Okay, it's all impossible.
So.
That, but that's a great deep point of.
But it, it's a, it is excellent because, I mean, I would never know in that, you know, that's, that's something that, we've gotta think about all those angles and I, I mean, we're just common citizens ourselves, you know, not knowing that.
Until such time that we straighten out the settling of the sewer line, um, we're probably going to run, boy, and hot water down periodically in the late winter. You know, if it, if it's borderline freezing, so. It was, we were experiencing that the same days that they were running a downtown track of water lines, so.
It was a meteoric.
Yeah, it was a bad, that's true.
And we're glad it's over with.
So I, I have applied to sell off what some of you would know as the Chuck Leonard, Chuck and Nancy Leonard house. The property immediately the north of the, of the bank's building. When Chuck and Nancy moved into the Greeley addition, we bought it because we thought maybe we would expand to the north. Um, and I was thinking that because I had, going back for twenty-five years when the, we worked with the Initiative Foundation years ago. I always thought the new library might go between the bank and City Hall, another beautiful red big, big building to tie in. And that Pete Warner's house would be removed and it would have.
That was talked about, you know.
Yeah, I, I had suggested that to John and Margaret, or John in particular.
But they're part of you, I'm concerned.
And, uh, you know, and I also suggested that they, the site where it is and I said, this would be, my first choice, this would be my second choice, so. Anyway, there's not going to be a library built between the bank and City Hall, so if I need to expand, I can come south. And therefore I really don't want to own that house any longer. Uh, so we've had it surveyed, as you can see in front of you, to match up the lot line exactly with the fence. The lot line actually went about to the midpoint of the residential driveway, so we've got that straightened out. And then, uh, straightened out the, uh, south line of the residential property as well. And I would like to put a new fence, or the white vinyl board fence on the property line. And sort of that is the, so. So we have to realign our, our boundaries somewhat to match up with where the historic fence is and, uh, I'd like to sum it.
So the old property line encroached into the driveway?
Uh, by, yes, yes, it did, yeah.
And the new property line was moved closer to Highway fifteen?
It, it's moved to, to be exactly where the fence is and that, you know, that, that was the occupation line for the last fifty years or so, yeah.
Um, somebody that I'd like to make discussion of? Now, somebody like to make a motion, number zero five zero seven two zero one ninety, um, proving a lot of line adjustment for Harvest Bank?
Make motion.
I have a motion from Christiansen, do I have a second on the table?
I'll make the second.
Second from Stubbin, in further discussion. If not, also, if you're seeing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Rich is not gonna be here, but I have uncle back in fact. Captain Lance?
Yeah, you're on Sunshine Roses, right?
Alright, uh, this will be a report for the month of, uh, April, uh, you should have a copy there in front of you. Uh, there was a couple of accidents, uh, the first one was just a minor carpet damage accident. Uh, the second one was an actual fruit trees, it was actually a thing called Time Driver, indication he may have fallen asleep and then hit a power pole. Uh, a couple of agency assists, that was just the sheriff's office down here, up in, up in a couple of calls. Uh, the animal complaint was a dog, uh, that was, uh, down in the park down near South of Town, it was either hit by a car or a train. Uh, had to be dispatched down there and then we took care of the remains after that. Uh, the assault, call it as an assault, it'd be sent to the county attorney's office, they'll decide whether or not there's actually enough there for charges or not. Uh, several meeting attendances there, twelve bar checks. Uh, the behavioral health was up at, uh, Savannah Prairie. Uh, the bomb threat, uh, at the high school. Burglary, uh, was left coded that way, turned out, uh, not to be a burglary, uh, more likely like the wind blew open the back door. Uh, a couple of car services there, a couple of contracts, the escort was a funeral, two false alarms. Uh, the fraud is a bad checkup at Casey's that has actually been folded into, uh, an ongoing investigation with our agency that, uh, the tenant is handling. We've got, uh, an individual who's been manufacturing and writing checks, uh, throughout the county for a while, so we're dealing with that one. Uh, the gas leak really was maybe a small one over at the PD that Nick and Aaron took, uh, care of, seems to be fixed now. Uh, hazard was just a pallet of the road that was pulled off. Uh, the house visits, uh, that might be relatively a new call, I don't recall seeing that on the Kimball report before. But a house visit is, uh, really that probation officer is down here making, uh, a home visit on the client, typically we're not involved with that at all. But for tracking purposes, because the probation officers also have radios to communicate with the dispatch center, which is starting calls, so we know where they're at. Uh, juvenile problem, uh, wasn't really much of a problem at all. Uh, three lift assists, uh, the matter of information was a call at the high school, uh, turned out that the high school's, uh, dealing with the issue and there is no crime. Uh, there's eleven medical emergencies, uh, throughout the month, uh, no real significant issues with any of those. Uh, the open door, the open door was at the police department. So I had, uh, sent, uh, one of my deputies down here one morning to pick up an investigative report from Nick and, uh, my fault, I didn't tell him to, uh, make sure the door shut on his way out, so, uh, Nicole called over and said, hey, uh, you in the office, because somebody just went in. Well, no, I'm not, so. Uh, there was a deputy up at County Road Eight and Fifteen, sent him down here, actually found the guy and we lucked out, it was a BCA agent here looking for a local officer, so.
Can't you just step up?
I, no, you can't. Uh, there's a paper service, uh, a parking violation was just that some cars parked on the wrong side of the street, on a one side only parking area and they voluntarily moved the cars. Uh, four phone calls for officers, report writing. Uh, suicide threat, uh, that was handled by our officer in the daytime, uh, they tracked down the individual and, uh, they were fine. Uh, suspicious smell was just called in, it was propane in fifteen and fifty-five and, uh, no source was ever found on that. Uh, suspicious vehicle, three traffic stops, two trainings on, uh, training and training online. And then the transport, uh, actually that's just a minor thing, the deputy happened to start a call here. Cause he met a red county deputy who arrested, uh, somebody, one of our warrants and picked him up here and brought him back up to Strays County. And that was April.
Alright.
That's good, thank you.
Did, um, somebody get a hold of the preschool teacher at the school?
Yeah, we connected today, so we're all set up.
She gave me again and I'm like, here's the number, we'll talk to him.
Yeah, I saw the number coming.
Especially ninth, Rich, and had the police officers go up there and talk to the preschool kids.
No, you, you had given me the number last week and I saw the number pop up this morning, you went, yeah. So, we're all, we're all connected for, uh, next Wednesday and Thursday to our officer stop right here, so. Just a quick half hour meeting rate with the kids is really all it is.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. Any questions or not?
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Public Works Department? Maybe, did you?
Alright, there's a little show. Yeah, there's a little show here for you guys, I don't know if you can see, do you need to get some lights?
I can flip the lights. We did that, maybe I'm later off to that head over there, then I'm like, how?
No, sorry, no.
Does it, Chris, do you guys know, like, how Public Works Department locates their subs? It's a nightmare.
Show me.
Sure. Both the nightmares.
No, I have a list that contains, uh, all the resources here, so, so what you get is.
We get a third.
Yeah, I can go, you have a list of, I just have the basic numbers.
The binder, the binder was able to have them door and then like all the property, you took them out and then it was drawn out.
I checked it, I checked it.
That's a weird little thing. Record truck.
Yeah, I checked it out. Nothing ever, nothing would work, so.
So we need to correct.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta check into that, so. I'll let you know.
The emergency, it's written, they can't hold on, and he's been on like a professional, he's got one, and it was blocked, it was like. Yeah, we need to, we need to.
Jim, help me see if I can find it on the card, please.
Okay. I don't know, I don't know where she is.
That's just a little.
Plus this one.
Yeah, we had gotten a proposal from Minnesota Water Authority, but I shouldn't have, so Chad brought a copy of the master sheet that we had. Because, um, they were one of the persons that my water did. So the proposal that's in your proposal packet, could, could be what? This owner. Oh, it's the same.
Weird.
Did you look there? So, it would be for something like this. Home market.
So it's a security policy, you can actually be, uh, here.
Oh, yes, well, so is it, yeah.
So the little white dot down here is curb stuff or what, yeah, right there?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then right next to it, where I do the, uh, I believe it's a shishel.
That's very nice. And then do they break you down into small sections for, like, for easier access of it or are they just rolling up that big nap all the time or are you just?
What rural waters doing is they're just mapping it, correct?
This, okay, and then they'll give you like a flash drive.
Okay.
With.
Sections or?
The coordinates on there.
Okay.
That we could then give to our engineer.
Yeah, plus a few feet from, unlikely.
Yes, so it would get, like, you with a three feet of your curb stuff.
Why do I have my curb stuff there?
One is the fuel, one of the fuels.
Uh, I will, I, I always pay attention to that.
So, and then this is what, maybe, I don't know if you guys want to move closer at all, so you can see, but this is what SEH.
Okay, so this is basically taking rural water map and making it digital so you can put it on your own, put it on iPad and field, uh, GIS, and so. What I'll do is it's happening to be Way Park that I have in front of me, also let's show out there enough that we can, uh, figure out a document here, so. I'm here to show up on it, so basically, um, direct from the city uses, utilizes the county's, uh, GIS system that has parcel information. And everything they need for their, for any parcel searches, property searches, whatever. Uh, this has all the information you directly probably have, comes off free of charge, doesn't matter, I'll, I'll take it on my end with our software, so that's, that's, you know, that's, you guys. But so for that, but there's one other thing that this one does that, that kind of won't work, can't do for you, and that's show your utilities up here, so. Like I said, I'm picking on Way Park just because I happen to have theirs in front of me. Um, I apologize, I don't like to turn away from you guys, but, uh, necessary evil here, so. Um, so basically, this is just, uh, this, just a general county base map, as you can see right now, there's not a lot of information in here, uh, streets and that's about it. So we'll go in here and, uh, turn on the real photo, okay, start to get a little more useful, and this is where we really get into something. I just turned on all of Way Park sewer, water and storm sewer system. So now we can zoom in and we see where the sewer lines are green, water lines are blue, storm sewers are orange here. So you see exactly where it is in relation to real time. If you have an iPad in the field, that's properly, you know, has a cell signal, it'll put a dot on the map saying where am I. Okay, so that's a pretty good deal, so let's say we are over at, well, let's say we're at Menards. And we need to see where the water service comes in in Menards. This is probably the biggest thing that would help you guys if you're talking frozen lines. You click on that line right there and there's your record drawing showing where that particular line is in relation to Menards off the plan set that built it. Okay?
Wow.
So now that you're not looking through the pile of paper books in the, in the coke, coke binder there, as I like to call it. Um, and you're doing something that's certainly a lot easier and it's, it's, it's. It's pretty useful, it's, uh, you still need to be able to read engineering plans, but at least you're on the right page and you got an awful lot better shot at it, so. What that does, where you, like I said, you got all your maps, they're in the system, they're ready to go, they're, click of a button, any map that we have, which is the vast majority of your system. Uh, we've done most of it, honestly, most of it's pretty, pretty recent, so we, we have some pretty good record drawings out there for, for Kimball. So we had attached those to these drawings here and then we are, you know, you're good to go on that, so. So that's anywhere in the system here that we can go anywhere, any part, we can look and see what that utility looked like according to the record drawing, so. So that's one layer of, of abil- ability that you can have with these GIS systems. The other thing would be to take the data that rural water would make the pretty map and you put it in here. And now, instead of just the hydrants being shown, every curb stop is shown as well. So it depends if, if, this is all a data system, you can put as much into it as you want, as much as it will, so. So right now the city has utility maps drawn in AutoCAD, a, a computer drafting so- software, okay? So it's not really a big deal, it's ten, twelve hours of our effort to get those into the system. Then they're as good as those AutoCAD maps are, the maps are, they're decent, they're not perfect, but they're better than, certainly better than what you have now. But in order to really get that accuracy that you want, you get out there with a survey crew and you shoot the curb stops, you shoot the valves, the hydrants, the manholes. And now things are, uh, if you do with our survey crew, within, you know, quarter inch square accuracy, so, so the three feet goes down to a quarter inch. That's not a big deal, yeah, except when it's frozen, but, you know, it, it's, it's certainly a help. Um, so that's another level of what we can do for you. I don't want to sit here and tell you that this is, uh, it's a perfect system. I don't wanna sit here and tell you that this is uh, it's a perfect system, it's as good as the data you put into it. It's just a representation of the data that we have available, but it certainly is very nice to be in the field, especially and we certainly have had some staff turnover on public works here. How easy is it for Chad to come into a system that he, he doesn't know a lot about? Uh, and have to pull up maps and try to figure out, you know, he doesn't have the record, you know, whose house number is this, who lived here? That history isn't there.
Right.
So, until you get that in your head, which does come, I, I certainly know, you know, the old so-and-so house is, is how everybody refers to it and, and eventually you catch, that takes you down. So, this gets anybody that's, what's that? I am absolutely not making fun of you, it happens in every community I serve. And that's not, not an exaggeration, so. So, like I said, the system is uh, it's something that honestly, most of our clients use. But until you guys have a need for it, I don't, I don't like you guys spending any more money than you have to, if the maps are working for you, I'm not gonna try to sell you this. Uh, cause it, it certainly isn't cheap. Um, I said, put a memo in your package saying what it'll cost. Almost all of it can be done in stages, you don't have to do all of, all of it at once, you could budget for it, you could um, you could do portions of it now, you could do half of it, you could budget three thousand dollars and see how far it gets you, I mean, we got infinitely many options. Uh, but what would have to happen would be the, the setup and the first purchase of licenses, I think the first year cost would be about fifty-five hundred dollars to get the system up and running and get the CAD maps in. Okay, now we could make it so that staff could attach the record drawings instead of my people doing it. Um, I don't know how much fun that would be, or if they have the time to do it. Uh, but that's an option. Get you an editor license, you guys can certainly attach those record drawings yourself, we can show you how to do that. Or my staff, I think he estimated, I don't, I don't have my memo in front of me, but I think it was like thirty-five hundred dollars or something like that to attach the record drawings. And, and that's certainly a benefit, for sure. But like I said, I, I'm not going to be a high-pressure salesperson by handing you, I, I wanna show you what's available.
Okay, so you've got some different prices here, but there is some. The total, is that at the end?
Um, I don't know that I honestly gave you a full.
No, that's just the stages that you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think it's, it's very nice. Um, trying to conceal it for Public Works to be, you know, looking and paying for, you know, to, to figure out where they are and everything, and even, um.
That's ladies and gentlemen.
It's, it's.
Why you saying, you know, through the body, we're trying to see something and it was all handed around then?
Then I have to think what they could do, like Terry got the info from her water. I could ask them if they're aware. I thought you only see Terry, have her mouse turned down? Would be more accessible to have them do this very much, a lot of information. And then for those Row Water, those like anything online?
Do we have, do we have simple drawings for all the old burn town? The oldest burn town, that kind of stuff?
You know, most of it's been replaced. So, with the two thousand twelve project and then Hazel and Linden Avenues and then over on Magnus Johnson, we honestly have done most of it, so. Yeah, so we do have pretty good record drawings for most of town. Honestly, our worst stuff is, is some of the private developments that we weren't involved in, you know, they were done privately, so you're, you're at the mercy of whoever gave you the drawings, so.
Yeah.
Um, but like I said, it's, it's pretty good, this is, I would say, I bet we have ninety-plus percent coverage in town.
Yeah.
Which is pretty amazing, I don't usually get that. So. Yeah, so basically what the sys- uh, system setup, to get our maps in there, I, I think it's like fifty-five hundred bucks is, is right at where I was at. That gets our CAD maps into GIS, it gets you a year of a, a subscription with I have three licenses for you guys and one for us, cause we need to have one to administer the program.
Is that an annual license?
The annual license is about a thousand bucks worth, so. The five, the five thousand is an upfront setup fee, it's just our time and then the annual license is about a thousand.
Are there any other maintenance fees or update fees each year for that?
Only if you guys want changes. So, if you, if you wanna add something to the system, uh, like for instance, Nicole asked about adding a zoning map. It's just whatever it takes my GS, GIS guy to put it in the system for you.
Zooming mapping is really nice.
It is, it's, it's awesome, we'll zoom into a parcel. Yep, I, I mean.
You could measure distances, the whole works.
Yep, yeah, and that's exactly what's going on here, I mean, you have distances, you can do, uh, you could say what's the, you know, the offset from this fire hydrant and it'll offset three hundred feet and anybody got notified within three hundred feet, I mean. Anything is there, it's just a matter of how good the data is that going in on front.
How much would it cost to add the zoning case?
I think it was like three hundred bucks. Yeah, so I mean, that, those are the kind of costs, I wanted to give you guys an example of, that's honestly the only thing we would do for you. Everything else is paid, being paid directly to Esri, the, the hosting person. The, the only thing we charge you for is our time on, on updates, so quite honestly, for us, it's, it's kind of a, a cost neutral thing, but we can help you with it, we'll help you, you know.
So, uh, on expansions or uh, future developments, bringing in, bringing into the system?
Minimal amount of time, uh, especially if we have the CAD drawing, if, if we did the CAD drawings for sure, it's, it's pretty easy. It's an hour emergency, I guess, guy's time and he, it's uploading, it goes, I mean, a hundred fifty, a hundred bucks, whatever, it's, it's up, so. So, really, it, it's, it's a one-time investment that's fairly significant. To get the record drawings in, it looks like you'd be at about you know, in that eight thousand, nine thousand dollar range, you get record drawings, everything ready to go for those first two steps there. Um, and then like I said, as much as you wanna do inaccuracy with the water and, you know, the survey data with, whether it's with my survey crew, uh, there are other options that I mentioned in that memo and I'll go through those now. Kimball could certainly hire a part-time person and buy themselves a reasonably de- decent GPS and you could run out and take all those points yourself. We can tell you how to label them and you can export them and then we can just upload them for you. It reduces my cost from eighty-five hundred to a thousand bucks, just cause it's all time. So, that's an option, um, having Row Water do it, uh, it, it seems like that's probably a bit of a stretch when it's Row Water's ten grand and I'm less than that, but that's, that's all up to you. Um, eh, Row Water's, we could import theirs right in, it'd be about that same thousand bucks for us, so. So, there's really not, and, and that's again, that's not an immediate thing, it can be next year, it can be two years down the road, whenever you're ready for it. But the better the data, the better the website, that's all there is to it. It, it's really a fantastic tool, it really is, I I can't, I, I can speak fairly highly of it. In its infancy, these things were not very stable, but these websites have gotten pretty stable to the point where they're, they're pretty much always ready to go. The hosting is pretty good. I mean, it used to be that we had to buy a special computer for you and it's, it's on a desktop version and only in City Hall. That's not nearly as useful as having an iPad in the field. So.
Are city workers at all, so? Who's, all of them? Going in?
What was that, Sartell?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could actually pull up Sartell's for you too, I have that as well. I went with weight park just because I know everybody goes to Menards.
Not necessarily.
Well, that's a good point. So, I mean, I can show you guys around anymore, I don't, like I said, I'm not trying to be a high-pressure salesman, I just wanna show you what's available.
If, if there is a need for, there, there, we need this.
I think something just have to work into the budget.
Yep. Yeah, and, and you know, be, I wrote a memo and not a formal proposal because I want you guys to see what the options are. If you get to the point where you want a, a proposal, I'll iron the numbers out to, you know, near as fifty bucks or whatever it comes down to, so you guys know exactly what it's gonna be. Okay, um, do that for uh, how much, just for the base, um, base plus adding record drawings?
Can you just give us all, just kinda add to it, just so we so that we could break it down if we, if we wanted to do it you know, part that was here and.
Yeah, I can separate it on task, it's still looking awful lot like a memo.
Like I was just saying, it took Joey and each other for a time person, this, this is a bit of her alley, she loves doing this kind of stuff.
It is, yeah, you guys can go buy a very nice handheld GPS sub-meter accuracy, so less than three feet of accuracy, which is what Row Water was gonna use. Probably five hundred bucks. It is, and it's something you'll use and then now you have the pieces of equipment to go out and find that curb stop after you already shot it, so. You pull the points down from the GIS system, you put it into the, to curb stop night, or to that same unit that you use to collect the data, you walk out there and there it is. So. Actually, you probably leave it stored right on there, quite honestly, and.
Hmm, absolutely.
That's what you need to have.
Okay.
If I hadn't been a part of this, I wouldn't have had any clue with the map so far before you experienced it, you seem to have, it was like, fun, fun, fun.
It's, it's tough. Yep, I create them for a living and it's not always easy to follow an old one.
No, I mean, it's like, that was the most ridiculous thing I've seen in my life and it took a lot of time and it took, you know, a lot of steps trying to figure it out. That was ridiculous.
Yep.
Very awesome.
And it's
Great.
It's gonna be a work in progress, it's gonna be something that you're gonna improve over time and the more you do yourself, the less I have to charge you for it, so.
And the good thing is we have Chad just starting and he's this little baby and he can work if they want him, he'll watch you grow.
Absolutely, and, and supportive staff is a big step in the right direction, because without that, I would tell you to stay away from it. But if you have staff that's gonna use it, which you clearly do, that's great. Alright, well, I'll turn the lights back on then. Absolutely can, yeah, and, and I would strongly encourage you to give one of those licenses to the fire department, especially for locating hydrants, uh, when we have piles of snow. That is a wonderful.
Is there anything else, Chad?
Uh, not for me. I just have a question. Uh, regarding our compost set? I'm not readily available as everybody else that used to hold this position. I was wondering if you'd also wanted to set powers or meaning if we were discussing possibly having a set number of keys and that residence going to check itself? For the compost set, when I'm not available?
What's the policy now?
Right now, they contact me to set up a timing, we're all there, uh.
It used to be open all the time and these people started recording their foretiled off there and
Curbs.
And all the home starting and a lot of me, there are times when people did come out there to see them. So.
What do you think, regularly, well, it's gonna be accessible for?
And if it's open on the weekends, my husband can always go out there and lock it up, I mean, and so the weekends is when people are around their yard cleaning.
That's what I've been getting.
Right, and my husband goes out there usually on the weekends. And I mean, it's, it's same as you work, if people are dying out out there for doing the right stuff and if we know who's doing it. And it, it never happened until the last couple of years, people started using it, which is unfortunate. Oh, I mean. Um, I don't know if you wanna check out keys, I mean.
The, the, I think the thing about key though is they could have a copy made and another.
You make the, you're not gonna keep the ones?
Oh, okay, okay, so I, I'm not.
It's not complicated.
Okay. I, I like that idea actually.
I like when it was open up.
And maybe they have to, maybe they even have to make the, you know, like a five dollar deposit and they don't get, if they don't get your key back. I, I don't know, or, you know, I don't know. So, we have a little more control over it.
Or could you just put a sign out there saying when it's open and, I, I mean, cause then you're starting to use staff.
Yeah.
Checking out keys and, you know, you gotta make sure you get the keys back.
There are some cities that have like keyless entry systems.
So, the, the code?
Actually, yeah, have a code or a key card.
And that's actually a very nice idea. Cause then, it's only city residents, yeah.
I think the hour thing, but, I don't know. Yeah, I know, people don't appreciate it.
Right, you'd have with some sort of security system.
It's probably needed mostly in the spring and then the fall. You know, cause people are cleaning up their yards and after storms. And after storms. So, if we could extend the hours during those periods of time and maybe leave it open a little bit in the morning. And then, you know, in the middle of June, maybe someone might want glass, grass, something to put out there, I don't know, but I, I think.
The key thing provides an element of, you know, sort of managing the site a little better. We could sign, help the key.
We have a key right down that people know that it's available, maybe.
But, you know.
At like a weekend.
I don't know what that does for Saturday though, you know. So.
Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, Dan buzzes up at all the time, so we can watch it too. Very fair, how?
We can be the, the.
I, it used to be open, it's been a while since I did it. Used to be even open.
Even Robert.
Branches and brush and leaves and stuff in there once, but.
My husband went down there, the truck's back working, down in the little, remember? Look, they called the cops, the truck. He had the cops out there doing. He got a lot.
What, what's your opinion, Chad?
I was leaving it open for the council, can't make that final decision, I figured the keys were the cheaper direction on that, you know.
I, I'd say what you feel most comfortable with, I have keys and some game hammers.
Keys, mm-hmm.
It's not a bad idea, game hammers are cheap.
I'm not gonna be making sure that the residence going out.
I'm sorry, I'll probably, I know it was in there or not in there and and uh,
Yeah.
You know, you can kinda
Yeah.
Get a, an idea of maybe who dumped the shingles out.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because, because citizens could take advantage as well by bringing somebody else out there to dump. And I, I'm not saying that they, they would, but you just, you know.
I kinda like the key thing too.
Yeah.
Would you wanna extend the hour to you or whatever, like?
It is, it's, I don't mind that here, I'm just saying on the weekends getting more people
Yeah.
More opportunities to get out there.
Yeah, we can help you too.
Okay.
Alright.
It's awesome, mixing up. Chief Ryan here is looking like he wants us to get him.
This is your, you can have.
Okay, thanks.